Call this meeting to order. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting, June 14th, 2022. Yeah, okay. This meeting is, sorry. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended on June 16th, 2021. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. The governor's order, along with all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body, is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, all members of this meeting who will participate, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Thank you. And seeing no one here to also record, we will move on to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't see any citizens here to comment, so we'll move on to special recognitions.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. We don't have anyone here this evening, but I do have a couple of things that have come up a little bit last minute that I thought would be appropriate to share. Catherine DeFoss, one of our students at Auburn High School, has qualified for the Nationals in outdoor track and field, which is a very big deal in the track world. She will run the 100-meter hurdles and also participate in the long jump. The events take place June 17th through the 19th, so I will keep the community notified on how that turns out, but it's a really big deal to be invited to that.
Where are they?
Yes. I think Pennsylvania.
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 That's awesome.
And the last time Mrs. Bailey was here from the Performing Arts Department, she talked about the Tammy Awards that are like the Tony Awards. Well, they had their gala event. Naomi Durst, grade eight, got the Rising Star Award. Ashley Pelletier in grade 12 got Not Your Average Chorus Member Award.
Oh, good.
Tyler Poschkis, grade 10, Kate Jedgliardo, grade 12, and Ashley Pelletier also represented Auburn in the opening number of the awards ceremony. And overall, Newsies, the production, won Best Chorus and Best Stage Crew.
Wow.
So we have a lot to be proud of that way, too.
Good for them.
Yes.
That's impressive.
On a note more town-based, I just wanted to let everyone know that Todd Lemon was officially sworn in as Chief of Police today.
Oh, okay.
He nicely had invited me to attend, but I was speaking at our Unified Day games today, so I was not able to attend, but we're very happy about that. So that's all it for special recognitions today.
Great. Congratulations to him as well.
Yes, he's been already a wonderful colleague and supporter of the Auburn Public Schools. I think we're gonna have a great relationship.
That's great.
Yes, I've known that name for years, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a good group over there. Great. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of June 1st.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is a vote. Do we have student representatives tonight?
We do not. She was unable to make it.
Okay, this was her last one, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Jasmine wasn't sure. I don't think she was coming back for this one.
Jasmine wasn't.
No.
And Ally can't make it.
It was just gonna be Ally, but Ally couldn't make it.
Well, Ally, if you're watching, thank you so much. You've been great.
She has been great.
And we can't wait to see you next year. Okay, and move on to the superintendent's report.
So I am sad to say, our spotlight on students, that has been a great hit. This evening, we were going to have some of the students from the American Sign Language Club that is held at Auburn Middle School, and they were going to share some of what they've learned during this time. We will table their visit and have them come another time. The person that runs the club was not able to make it, and so it was kind of a last-minute thing. So I apologize that we don't have any kiddos here tonight. It would've been a nice way to kind of finish up, so.
Well, we look forward to seeing them, hopefully, maybe the start of next year. Are they gonna continue the club?
I believe it is going to continue, yes.
All right.
Yeah. You know, I will tell you, there are some school districts that offer that as a foreign language.
Yes.
American Sign Language, which is something that maybe potentially down the road we could talk about, because that is something that, you know, we use it often with our young children who are just beginning to learn to speak or have speech delays. So it's becoming more and more common. So who knows? Maybe that's something down the road.
I have an aside to add on that. I have someone that teaches an older grade, and they've found that the students that know the sign language are using it amongst themselves to have secret messages in class.
Oh, geez. It's brilliant.
The old days.
Why didn't I think of that?
The old days, we passed notes. Now they don't have to. They just move their fingers.
Yeah. Wow, all right.
The world is a web.
I know.
My kids are watching. I'll have to tell my daughter. So sign up for American Sign Language.
Yeah, well, my daughter's in the club, so I'm gonna, I hope she's not watching right now. Oh, that's funny. Okay. Move on to the COVID-19.
Yeah, so as you can see, our counts have been down today. We reported just one, so we continue on a good trend, hoping that will stay. We're still in the process of evaluating what we have on hand for test kits and that kind of thing. I'll probably bring to you later in the summer some decisions around, you know, if we're going to be purchasing additional tests for the fall, if we'll be doing that. If we do our own testing, we have to apply for a CLIA waiver, which, I'm not gonna know what that acronym means, but it gives us the authority to conduct that type of testing in our schools. Leah sat in on a, our head lead nurse sat in on a webinar this week. So once I meet with her, we'll make some decisions about that. We may move forward and get the CLIA waiver. It's only a couple hundred dollars, and then see how things play out in the fall, but at least we'll have it, and it'll be done, and we won't have to scramble to try and get it if we choose to conduct that testing in the schools.
Okay.
So more to come.
All right. Well, we're moving right along here. Move on to unfinished business.
Yeah, so these next three items have been to you. This will be the third time before you. The updated bullying policy. I don't know if anyone has any remaining questions or any thoughts about that, and if not, then we'll move forward to see if the committee agrees to approve.
Anybody have any?
I'll make a motion.
Interesting. No discussion? Good. I think it looks good.
I thought it looked good.
Yeah.
I've been reading through all these, and I'm thinking, boy, it sure was different when I started teaching.
Yeah. It's very true.
They have more directions and manuals for everything under the sun.
They do, and you know, you make a good point, that right? Not only are they trying to keep in mind what they're teaching in their classroom, but all of these different approaches to things, and what you have to be alert for, and then what happens if you hear something or see something, and it's complicated.
Right, to fill out the form and tell the right person, and.
Yes.
It's a lot.
It's getting very complicated.
It is complicated.
Complicated, but it was very thorough. And actually was, as a mother of two, I felt better reading it and seeing it all laid out there, so I thought it was good.
I will say that, I think you may have seen, I sent out a survey to families this week, and the results are still just, you know, kind of coming in. But one of the things parents are concerned about clearly across our buildings is bullying, you know? So I think this was time well spent to put this together and then to follow through.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely. I know, I was gonna mention that when I filled out my survey, that was the one thing I thought, like, that is gonna be the hot-button issue right there, and so.
Yeah, you've had experiences firsthand with.
Yeah.
One of yours, I did with mine.
Yeah.
It's nature of the child sometimes.
It is, it's the grade and the age and all that, but yeah. So I think these are steps in the right direction, for sure. All right. Meg, you wanna continue with that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated bullying policy.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is same. It's a third reading of the restraint policy. Again, you know, we continue to work through our CPI training to avoid any type of restraint in our school, our schools, by using de-escalation techniques and all of that, and that's part of the CPI training. We do hope that next year, given that we will have a couple of half-days that are potential for some kind of in-district things, to offer some de-escalation training to everyone, so that they have that. That is part of the PowerPoint we do at the beginning of the year, but you know, when you read it, or when you are in the training, it's a little bit, you tend to get a little bit more out of it. So we're hoping to ramp that up a little bit next year as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's one of those things you just hope you never have to implement.
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the updated restraint policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated restraint policy.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And the third one is the updated staff conduct policy. This related to the tiered focus monitoring visit that we had from DESI, that they felt it important we add that component around that the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan also applies to members of school staff. And so that was added in. So again, this is the third time. I look to any questions, if you have any.
Discussion on that one? All right. Get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated staff conduct policy.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will tell the committee that, so the staff handbook is on here as a third reading. I'm not quite actually sure if this is an action item or not. So this may go away after this time, and we may not meet a motion on this. Just as I mentioned the last time, this handbook is going to continue to update and grow and change, and it's going to have additions from each building. So I feel like it's something that's going to be more of a living document than necessarily a policy thing. It follows along with the policies you've established as a committee, but puts them in a way that makes information accessible to new staff. So if the committee agrees, I think we, you know, I can always bring it back when there is an update once a year perhaps, and share any changes to it. I don't know that it necessarily needs approval, as it will continue to change along the way.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I agree. And the updates that were listed are very basic. You know, we're not reinventing the wheel here. It's just a continuation of. So, yeah, that's fine with me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
The next item, and this is up for your approval, is the building use fee schedule and the regulations associated with that. I don't know if anyone had any opportunity to review anything about it. I think, you know, there were only a few places where we actually increased any fees. We really kept them as they've been. We've kept it completely fee-free and accessible to Auburn groups. But it just kind of made this a little bit more, I don't know, cleaned up a little bit and all in one place.
Yeah, no, I thought it looked good. It's fine. Yeah, I thought it looked good.
So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated building use fee schedule.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's gonna be a great addition to our system of things. Thank you for that. The next fraction of the student handbook updates. There were some questions at the last meeting related to a few items on Swanson Road. She, if I can just get there. I believe it was the last three that were on that sheet. Dr. Lopez has provided some update to that. Cell phones and smartwatches primarily is that they are off and away during the school day, that students don't have access to that. So that's, that was really all that was about. Dress code, it has to do with recent trends of some revealing clothing, hats, the wearing of sunglasses, that just not during the school day. You know, allowing kids to express themselves, because they are starting to do that. But, you know, kids with sunglasses and hoodies in a classroom aren't really ready to learn. So it was to address those couple of things. And the last related to attendance, tardies, and dismissals. We've had a number of students who get to school late. They dropped off on the street and just walk into the building on their own. And we really need families to be bringing them into the building and requests to allow kids to just leave the building. We can't do that either unless we know that there's someone there to get them. So it's really to firm that up, that parents are involved at that change and, you know, when they're either coming or going.
Okay, and that's all schools, high school, too? Is that?
Oh, yeah, they have to come in there, too.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, I think sometimes with the Swiss layout, people try and.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this was at Swiss.
No, this is at Swiss. They do, they'll drop off down on the street.
Oh.
It tends to come up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, sometimes it's just that time. It's only a couple of minutes late, but late is late, right? There's always that cutoff. We really need to have a parent signing them in when they come in late.
Yeah, definitely. Through the chair, in terms of dress code, is that the same at every school? I'm just thinking of parents with kids at a couple different schools and trying to think about what's dress code here versus here. Is it the same, like, at the high school?
It is. It's just a bigger battle there, right? As the kids get older, they get more and more about what they wanna wear, but they continue to do that about appropriate dress and work on those things. Same thing with the hoodies and the hats and all of that. I think they're a little bit more lenient with hats, but hoodies can be really problematic.
Yeah.
So, yes, it is the same.
Yeah, even with cheating and things like that, the hats, they can look up and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, and we're in like a crop top boom right now, so. My little one, who's in sixth grade, tries to wear them on the daily, and I'm like, that's not appropriate. So I don't know if that is part of the dress code or not, but I would be all for that if they said no more crop tops.
And too short. And too short shorts.
Yeah.
I'm seeing some of the stores, I don't know how they'd cover anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you, it's from a six-foot person, all shorts are too short. And I, when they implemented dress code, when I was in high school, I could no longer wear shorts, because I was too tall. I remember being very offended, but I made it through, okay.
I think that's probably the hardest part for these kids, any store you go in.
Yeah. That's the style right now.
They don't, they don't cover anything.
Yeah, nothing, no. There's not much to the imagination.
That's gonna be an ongoing battle, quite frankly. But you know what? We just have to be respectful about it either way, you know?
Yeah.
But certainly something that they work on at all the schools.
Do the best they can, I guess. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the student handbook updates.
I'll make a motion to approve the student handbook updates.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now on to new business. We have our special guest.
Janice will give us an update on some new information from the department, USDA, and it's a complicated process.
Yes, it is. I wanted to provide you a quick summary, but trying to be succinct with a very complex process is difficult. But I just wanted to thank our school nutrition staff first. What an awesome year it's been. It's always complicated many times doing the work that we do, but they're just amazing people. We've had a lot of promotions internally for our department, and they just continue to be very supportive, and what a team. That's all I could say, and we're proud of them. But for Auburn Public Schools, we are, of course, as school nutrition programs, we are self-funded. We are not receiving funds from the school district. And for the past two years, we have had free meals for all, for all of our students, and it's across the nation, not just in Massachusetts. But as of July 1st this summer, the federal level has decided that we will no longer continue with free meals for all.
Oh.
In lieu of that, in Massachusetts, the House of Representatives did pass a bill that would like to continue free meals for all Massachusetts students, but it has to pass the Senate, and it has not passed the Senate. So it's actually out into committee right now, so that committee is actually reviewing, you know, the impact of the finances of it all. But for now, we're looking at returning to free, reduced, and paid meals starting in the fall. And as part of that, I just wanted to mention that I'm gonna skip to the meal pricing piece, that meal prices have not increased in Auburn for over five years. Actually, I think it's in six years. And that's been done by good finance, management, and good food buying, staffing, et cetera. It's been, you know, it's pretty complicated behind the scenes of what we do. It's not as simple as one would think. But with rising food costs, as we all know, fuel costs, there is anticipated to be very significant increases in input costs for our programs, whether it's food or, you know, paper goods, things like that. But we have a revolving account that has sufficient funds, I believe, to hold off an increase in pricing if meals do not, you know, go to free meals. And I'm recommending that we wait till January, probably sometime in December, to take a look at pricing for meals, that we would continue with our $2.50 for our pre-K students, $2.75 for our elementaries, and grades six through 12 would remain at $3 for the fall. There are just too many moving parts right now in this whole scenario of pricing. And when meals go back to free, reduced, and paid, if the state senate does not pass the bill, we will see some shifts in meal participation. We've had almost 500% increase in the student participation in breakfast. We've managed very well in that area, and students have supported and have clamored for extra food at the free level. And student participation has increased over 600 meals at lunchtime since meals have been free. So we know it's a, it's a really good thing, and we are sending letters to our senators and requesting support for continuing free meals. But for now, my recommendation is that we continue with our current pricing for another few months, and then look at this again in December for potential increase in January. Connected to that is our collaborative bidding. We just received all of the collaborative bids. We're with the Massachusetts School Buying Group. It's a group of over 300 schools across, districts across Massachusetts. And for the next school committee meeting, you'll have letters that'll have need for approval of our buying from all these different organizations that are coming forward to us. New program initiatives. It's been an awesome year. We've still been doing some really fun, dynamic things, and it's been fairly well connected to culinary training, you know, helping our staff continue to learn more. New ingredients are out in the marketplace now, new foods. And so I did list some of the things that have been really fun for our staff. Several staff have received certifications by taking some culinary training courses online, and it's been, been, been awesome. And we're gonna be hosting a training with the John Stockton Institute with Framingham State University in October. And a new piece that just came through shortly, just this past week, is the Chef Anne Foundation. If you're familiar with Chef Anne Foundation, she brought Boulder, Colorado, school district from a very highly processed food district to the farm-to-school, locally grown initiative. Amazing people, and Chef Anne's coming here. So we're pretty excited with some of our networks that participate in, and they've selected Auburn, so we're pretty happy about it.
Great.
And for the final piece, we are recommending a new hourly rate for our non-permanent staff, our casual staff, to move from $14 an hour, which you approved for January. We're recommending that for July 1st that we move to $14.25. So that would be a recommendation, so I'm not sure what else.
Will $14.25 be enough to compete with the business world out there? The grocery stores and the other places?
Right now, the $14.25 would be, you know, we feel it's competitive based on other school districts. We're actually ahead of other school districts right now. And that's kind of where I like to be, ahead of the game. And we have a lot of staff who stay with us for a long period of time, because they, they like the environment, they like the program that we operate, and that they participate in. So I think we're still very competitive. I may be back again in November or December for requesting another increase.
Now, are there chances for longer employees to earn more money per hour, or is that the cap?
Yes, we had a very successful renewal of our contract agreement with our cafeteria workers this past couple weeks with 4% increases. We're very happy, you know, that we're in a financial position to be able to do that. And we actually raised, we included new, new scales.
Oh, good.
For the three-year level, so we're very happy. And they're very happy, too, I think.
This $14.25 is really for folks who occasionally sub for us. Yes. So it's raising that rate. But Janice did an excellent job, I think, and I think her staff was very happy with her recommendations for the other positions, to kind of shift those up a bit. She's got some longtime staff. And this, this entry position is kind of like the farm team. So they come in, they work a few days, then if there's something open, they can move to five days, then they can move back and move into a more permanent spot when it's open. So it really is a great opportunity for somebody to see if they even like to do this type of work, you know? So I will say the rest of the staff was very happy with the way the contract went.
Oh, good, because it's important that that component of our schools be happy.
Yeah.
Each year, I've been involved in three different contract years, and each year, we keep adding more, adding more. More incentives, more stipends, and it's important to do that, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just waiting, I guess, for the next step, next words. So I think we are not alone in that concern about the movement back to paid and reduced lunch charges. You know, I've been hearing this all over the news across the country, that school districts are clamoring to keep it free for all kids. Most districts have seen tremendous increases like we have, because it's just made it so much more accessible for kids. So it's really unfortunate, and I think we're really hopeful that something here will happen in the state of Massachusetts that will help that. But for the time being, we kind of are in a bit of a pickle that that's the way we're gonna have to go. But thankfully, we can at least keep them as they've been for a number of years, given some time, and hopefully, we don't have to go to an increase. Hopefully, by then, we're talking about something that's gone through the legislature that has helped to support this. So it's gonna be a big shift for our community, for all communities.
Sure.
They really got quite used to that, and it was a great benefit. So we'll see how that goes, but it's, it's too bad that it's gone that way, honestly.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully, things turn around and they realize at the higher levels that it's made a huge difference, and, you know, for the families and stuff, so.
Yes.
But either way, I mean, $3 for the food, the quality of food, it's a bargain price, so, yeah.
We will be sending out communication. Let me just put that up there, so they can hear you on TV.
We will be sending out communication to parents mid-July. We feel that we needed a few more weeks for the Massachusetts State Senate Committee to do their reviews, but as soon as we hear from them, we'll be sending it out. But it is the best bargain with rising fuel costs, gas prices, and food costs. You can't make a lunch for $2.50, $2.75, or $3, and you don't have to clean the lunchbox, so.
Yeah, right. Buy the food. Right. Yes, true.
Hope to, we've talked about putting, Janice communicates very regularly through the one-call system, but also putting some small blurbs about things out on Facebook to kind of get the word out that this is the shift we have to make. So that'll happen over the summer, too, once we've made that commitment to kind of get that out, so.
All right. Okay, good. And we still have the reduced option for the people that need it as well, so.
Correct, yes.
And when would they need to fill out all that paperwork? Is that through the bus application process or?
USDA meals application has not been submitted to us yet. We're hopeful that will be within the first week of July. And as soon as we receive that, we'll be sending it out. And so families that feel that they might qualify from an income standpoint. We, you know, encourage them, highly encourage them to fill it out. We also work through the virtual gateway to automatically directly certify families. So they don't have to do anything. So we'll be knowing a little bit more about that in a couple of weeks.
All right.
I think, Janice, can you correct me if I'm wrong, that even if school starts? Because I recall as a principal, we would often send those out even at the, you know, once school had started as well. If someone hadn't done it during the summer, that's still okay, right?
Yes, yes.
I mean, we want them to do things sooner than later, but we make that accessible to them along the way.
We, we send multiple copies to schools. We take a look at how many families and children are directly certified. And we notify them as well that you don't have to fill out an application, you're all set. The children are approved for free meals or reduced meals. Either way, the, the state Department of Health and Human Services works with Department of Education. And we get the information of families that automatically qualify.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
If a family does not fill out a form and they, but later in the year, they need to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You, you can fill out an application anytime. It's, we're available, so anytime.
All right, great.
Good to know.
Yeah, definitely. All right, any more discussion on food services?
Do we make the action to increase that?
Yeah, are we, do we want to approve the increase tonight?
Yes, that should be approved if, if the committee is willing, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a fair increase. So I'll seek a motion to increase the pay rate for subs in the food services to 1425 from $14.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Janice, I just want to say that you've been amazing. And my, I want to, like, my whole time on school committee or most of the eight years have been working with you. And it's just been such a huge, like, vast improvement, like you've just done an amazing job, so.
You have a great team that it's, it's amazing.
Yeah.
We all work well together.
It's great. It's, it's good to see.
Thank you for the compliment.
Yeah, no.
Especially the, what was that thing you had at the middle school that time? I just remember you making caramel sauce. It was like a.
That was through our USDA grant with our farm to school.
Sorry. Yes, we, we had a little bit of a hiatus with the past few years with doing many wonderful things that we love to do. We love to cook for people and we love to show new things. And we had the wonderful opportunity of having the USDA grant. Which helps support the farm to school initiative that we had at middle school for two years.
Yeah, yeah, that was great.
It's great. Wonderful to have you come.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Anything for free food with my kids. Caramel sauce, I mean.
How do you deny that, right?
Caitlin pulled up a chair, she's like, I'm just going to stay right here.
Okay, all right, let's move on to. Remote and hybrid.
Yes, we've been notified by town manager Jacobson. That the statute allowing for public bodies to offer hybrid and remote participation in such meetings will expire on July 16th of this year. This means that as of that date, we are no longer able to offer this as an option to our community members. So just putting that out there as a point of information for, we've not had a huge number of folks come in via Zoom. But that will change as we start the new school year.
So that will include our student reps as well?
Correct, yes, yes.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Well, good, it's a sign of good times.
Right, it is.
On the horizon, so.
The other day, I actually thought we might find with it. I could have like a principal's meeting in person. We're still doing those remotely. Yes, it's kind of convenient, but yeah, we are, we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, like zoomed out, so. All right. I like that.
What's that?
I like that, zoomed out.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to teaching and learning report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the last meeting I had shared, we talked about the CLE report and some of the data that was included there. And one of the things, I think, Madam Chair, it was you that brought up was the vocal survey. So it took me a little bit of digging on the DESI site to find a report. Because the one I had sent to CLE was really like a, like a worksheet, an Excel spreadsheet. So I was able to find this. It does go back to 2019. We did not get 2021 results because seemingly we probably didn't have enough participation. Given the, you know, some kids were coming in to take tests and it wasn't all done in school and there were still some kids that were remote. But I did think that it was worthwhile still looking at this information and also to see what it collects. So they did again, take this survey this year. It does happen in grades four, five, eight and 10, so they don't do it in every grade level. So in, in looking at this, I, I did give you all the questions, which I think are some very important questions for us to be asking our, our children. You know, some of them have to do with bullying, safety. I feel safe, teachers support me, I'm happy to be at my school. Groups of students in my school, groups of students tease or pick on one another. I've seen a fight in my school. So things that ask very plain questions to kids about what their environment is like. And if you look at, you know, we fall really in what they describe as schools with typical school climate. In, in each of those grade levels, kind of right in the, right in the middle. Some, a little bit towards the higher end, going towards a school with a very strong school climate. But I do intend to share this with our principals as well, even though it is a couple of years old. I think it's important and it will tie to some of the results we get back by that simple survey I sent out earlier this week also. And I just didn't know if anyone had any questions about it. I thought it was, I thought it was a good layout. It just, they didn't make it easy to find, I will tell you that.
Any discussion?
Well, the results look like, you know, Auburn's right in the middle. Doing, doing well.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's good for the faculty to also see this and know, you know. But some of it is tough because you don't know, like, some kids might be having a bad day. And they're just basing it on that one morning or whatever, so.
That's always the hesitancy with sending out a survey, right? I hesitated to send out a family survey. I hesitate to send out teacher surveys sometimes because that's exactly right. But what we tried to talk about is you just look more at the trend, right? You look at, you know that some that are in there are, are going to be negative for some of those reasons, right? So you kind of have to take that with any survey you do. Because depending on when you hit a person, sometimes that's what happens.
Yeah.
So I do think in some cases, you know, I, I do have concern about what we get back for our results from this year. That they may be lower, given the experience kids have had over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
You know, we may not see things go up, even though quite frankly, our efforts have, right? Our efforts to help with bullying and safety and all of those things have amped up. I'm not sure that it may be reflected in our next, next set of results because we've all just been through a lot.
Yeah, I agree.
But through the chair, the states probably will probably see the same changes with them. So at least we'll be able to compare the two.
True, yes.
Yeah.
But I, I thought it was some interesting, I liked the questions. I think some of those, next time when we prepare a, a survey for kids in our own, you know, if we want to do one just for us. We may just snag some of those questions. I think it's good to ask the same thing a few times. That's when you start to get data that you can rely on.
Yeah.
You know?
Definitely.
When you do that, but anyway, I just thought I would share because it had come up. And, and thought it was a good layout and then we'll see. This will be something I think moving forward, we share each time we get that. I think it's fair to have that out to the community, so.
Definitely. No, I appreciate you including us, definitely. Yeah, it's great. Shines a light on how we can do things better, so. Any more discussion? Okay, we're moving on.
The next one is just for your information. I provided you a list of the class of 2022 scholarships. Which I think if I recall correctly, Mr. Delon Champ was said, totaled someplace in the area of like $96,000. That our, our graduates received, which was just an amazing amount, just an amazing amount. So many things available to them. And our guidance department does an excellent job with getting kids to apply, making sure they know the money's there. So I encourage anyone out there who will have a senior at Auburn High School next year to make sure they tap that guidance office. Because there is such a wide range of funds available to kids. Just through our small community, which is amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive, especially the Chamber of Commerce and, yeah, all of these. Small organizations that just run events for the sole purpose of giving back to the kids, you know, through scholarships, so.
And they do it year after year after year.
Yeah, yep, thank you to all of them, for sure.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
And the last thing under teaching and learning today was our school day games. So our Unified School Day Games, first annual, took place today at Auburn High School. Athletes from K, last, no, I shouldn't say that, pre-K through 12 participated along with their partners. There were a wide range of activities that kids participated in. We had the police department color guard there. Officer Kennedy walked in holding the Olympic torch, which was awesome. They played the Olympic theme as they all entered the stadium. I, I'll tell you, I'm getting goosebumps thinking about it because by the time they sang the National Anthem, I was in tears at that point and could barely talk. But the parents just had such a great time. It was Ally DeLuca and her team of folks that, you know, she had people at every building that helped to organize this. The organization of this was nothing short of heroic. With getting all the kids and their partners and some fans. So we had some fans from each of the schools that came just to watch so that, you know, they had, they needed people there watching them. The other communities, the pizza, the donations, the water, the, just every detail. It was something that you have to go to when it happens again. It's just a must-see.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's great.
I think one of my top three events in the Auburn Public Schools. It was just something. And they honored Gracie Bulger and Ray Lippman, two students of ours who have passed. Who certainly would have been there participating today, you know, if they were still with us and. Yeah, it was very meaningful. So I thank everyone for their contributions and, and all that that happened today, so.
That's awesome.
Through the chair, they even had their names right on their shirts.
We did, we had, we all had shirts and one had Gracie and one had Ray's name on the other side, so. Yeah, it was, it was emotional. You know, people getting tied to their kids, so.
Yeah, well, that's great. Do we do a winter games too or is it just?
No, this is a one, two, yeah, once a year event. I mean, and, you know, we'll have unified basketball, unified bocce, you know, those unified kind of teams that happen along the way. But this particular event is a once a year event. It, it took them all year to plan it. Like, it was, there was a lot to get this all coordinated, so. Because the kids also with their partner, they're practicing.
Yeah.
So whatever events they're in throughout this course of the school year, they're preparing, they're practicing, they're trying to get better. So it takes, it takes a long time, you know, but yeah, it was great.
Wow, Ally DeLuca is amazing. She has totally like just run with this whole thing. It's been great to see. So thank you to her and the team for making that happen. I'm sure there's a lot of happy kids at home right now, very proud of themselves.
And tired. You can see them at the end of it. They only went to, you know, they had lunch there and then they went back to their schools and they were, they were getting tired.
Looking good tonight.
Along with the teachers, I think, too, that were there.
That's great. So there was food donations as well?
There were, yes, there were, yeah.
Awesome. This town is great. They come together and really support everything.
Oh, and I didn't say they had escorts too. Police escort and fire department escort with the sirens. I heard the sirens, I'm like, oh, please, don't, don't think, I was thinking somebody who's coming to the high school. Although it's just the kids with the school bus and all of them, the sirens. It was awesome, right?
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Okay, well, that is exciting news. Good for them. All right, we'll move on to business and financial report.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, I was hoping to be there tonight, but unable to, so I'm glad I'm able to join you remotely. Just wanted to go over a couple of things. I have something very short for you tonight. I provided in your packet a yearly budget report dated June 9th. You know, I'd be happy to answer any questions and along with that, I have one omnibus transfer that I've completed. And continue to, continue to work with Dr. Chamberlain to close out the, the school year. And things seem to be moving very well in that, you know, in that area. We're working on getting all our purchase orders completed and everything closed out. And our final materials being, have been ordered and waiting for them to come in. And as they clear, we've been passing them through the warrant process. Payroll, we, we ran our next to last payroll today. And then there'll be the last payroll on June 30th, so we're slowly getting there. And, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or discussion?
Everything looks good, Cecilia.
Looks great.
Thank you so much.
As usual.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I appreciate all the support.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Cecilia.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. I think that's a wrap, right?
Yeah, I think just to share with the, with the committee today, Alan Keller, our new assistant superintendent. Came and spent a few hours this afternoon so that we could go to each building and he could see the principal, walk the building a little bit. And start to build his relationships. He is closing out his own middle school school year, so he'll be busy for the next couple of weeks. May do some remote work the week of July 1st. I'll be on, the July 4th, I'll be on vacation that week. So might stay remote and then, yeah, he'll be here full time, so.
Great.
Yeah, it was a great visit today and I think, I think we're going to be in very good shape once he gets on board, so.
Is he local or?
He's, he works in Hawke's Peak right now, lives in Holliston. He's going to have about a 40-minute ride.
Because Keller is an Auburn name. There's a couple of families with that last name and I was just wondering if he was a relative or something.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think so, but, yeah, so that was good news too.
Yeah, great.
It's great.
We're going to have help soon.
Yes.
It must feel good.
Well, I know where you started.
It's going to sit down and it's going to just slide it.
Hey, welcome, here's your pile.
Well, that's good news. We're very excited to have him on board. Can't wait to meet him.
Yeah.
So Meg, you were on that committee. You had great things to say about him. It's great, so.
So we do have one more meeting on our yearly schedule for the 29, right? Which until Janice spoke this evening, I didn't anticipate that she's going to be coming forward with some letters that may need to be signed. I didn't think we'd need the, the meeting.
We could do that in our office if, if we don't, if that's the only thing we'd have, we don't need a meeting just for that.
Well, do they need to be passed, like approved or anything?
Yeah, I'll follow up with all of you. I'll send out an email on that. I'm not exactly sure. I think it's about the contracts with her providers. So I will follow up on that. If it's information we can just share at a later meeting, we'll do that. Because I didn't intend to have that last meeting. I thought we would kind of wrap things up at this point, so. But I'll send something out to you, Jesse, that you can share with the committee once I touch base with her tomorrow.
All right.
I don't know if she intended to have them tonight and then didn't get them.
That could be.
Yeah.
So.
It sounded like that.
Yeah, yeah, so more to come. I, I will tell you all the, there's been tons of delays. You know, they're seeing, food services are definitely seeing the supply chain issues for sure. Even pricing and everything, things that they would have had, you know, six weeks ago, they still don't have. Because people are waiting before they put out any kind of pricing. What's going to happen with gas? What's going to happen with, with the economy? So she's in a bit of a pickle this year.
Yeah, I think by September, we're really going to be in for a wake-up call. I don't know, but we do have buffer there in that revolving account, so.
We do, it's a very, very healthy account. So I think it's a wise choice to make for the benefit of our families.
Yeah, definitely.
Now, when we did the busing contract, did they have some sort of an escalator clause? That if gas prices went up beyond a certain point, they could charge us more or?
No, so, no. So we, we're in good, we're actually in good shape with that. They're not going to be charging us more. If I recall from those contract discussions. We're in good shape with that, so we shouldn't be hit. Oh, go ahead, Cecilia.
Oh, no, I was just going to say through the chair, we made sure there were no fuel escalators when we were negotiating the contract, so we are.
Yeah, good.
It's really good right now.
I don't think we ever expected it to go this side.
No.
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 And there's no end in sight, so.
No.
Luckily, we have our contract in place for another year, so. With an option to renew for two more years after that, if, you know, if we decide to, with AA. So I think we're in good standing, so that should be good.
Excellent, good stuff. That's great. Okay, so this might be our last meeting for it, right? Yeah, all right.
And we'll start back up again. I do think we will have the meeting in August. Right, there's usually that one before school starts and then the next one's when the teachers come. But I think this hopefully will be it, so we made it.
Yeah, we made it. It's been quite a year. Oh, wow. Well, I hope all the families out there have a great summer and I hope all you guys have a great summer. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, yes, can I get a second?
Second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.